Go ahead and call this meeting to order. Welcome to our council meeting in the interest of time efficiency and ensuring that everyone who wishes to address the council is given the opportunity to do so, the following will apply to all comments made by the public. Each speaker will be allotted three minutes to address the council unless such time is extended by the mayor or by questions from council. The group shall designate a spokesperson to avoid repetition of comments. Every effort will be made to avoid interrupting speakers. Thank you for participating in your city government. And I now call this meeting to order. And will everybody please stand for a moment of silence and a pledge of allegiance?
Thank you. A pledge of allegiance.
To the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right. And city manager, do you have an agenda update?
I have no updates, thank you.
All right, thank you. And presentations, we have no presentations. We will, so we're going to talk about the other things at the end of the meeting, right? From the last, from the workshop? All right. And so consent agenda, next portion of tonight's meeting is consent agenda, which contains items that have been determined to be routine and non-controversial. If anyone in the audience wishes to address a particular item on the consent agenda, now is the opportunity to do so. Additionally, if staff or members of the city council wish to speak on a consent item, they have the same opportunity. Will clerk, please, please read resolution number 2025-143R, number one.
You want to, you want to read each of the consent items in?
Oh, no, I'm sorry. It's a consent. Nope, we're good. Does council have any, any consent items they want to talk about? Felt like I was at the end of the meeting already because we've been in here since three. All right, and can I get a motion if no discussion? Would anyone in the item, in the audience like to speak on the consent agenda? All right, and council?
Motion to approve the consent agenda.
Motion approved. Council member Urban.
Second.
Second from council member Paul. Madam clerk, please call the room.
Council member Fletcher.
Aye.
Council member Paul.
Aye.
Council member Urban.
Aye.
Deputy Mayor Gilbert.
Aye.
Mayor Robertson.
Aye.
Motion carries five zero.
All right, next up, we have the citizens forum. Any person who desires to comment on any item not on this agenda has provided this opportunity to address the city council. Each person is requested to complete a sign-in form to be provided to the providing officer prior to or as soon as there practical thereafter. The person addresses the council. Will the, let's see, we have Mark Kessler. Is it Keslov, Keslev?
Kessler, yes.
Kessler, yes, sir, gotcha.
Good evening, everybody. Well, some of you might know me. I'm just going to read everything I wrote here. My name is Mark Kessler. I'm a veteran teacher here in Osceola County, here at Michigan Avenue Elementary for 31 years. Okay? Thank you.
Thank you.
And I've been a resident here for 25 years. I'm standing here tonight to ask that you consider spending more money to place another speeding camera just past the light of our school entrance. There's a, if some of you know, there's a, there's a church right there, right? And then just beyond it, I stay at, on the left-hand side. I stay at the pedestrian gate every morning from 8:50, 7:50 to 8:10. And every morning, I see cars speeding in the 15 mile an hour zone going southbound. And I just think that's absurd. Like, I understand those cameras cost a lot of money, okay? There's a camera just coming past the bus barn when you get to the blinking light, okay? And the cars start to slow down. And then there's two other cameras on Michigan Avenue, right by the high school and the 17th Street. But we need another camera because like this morning, I took a video of this car going at least 35 or 40 miles an hour going southbound. Now, how is that going to be right? So I'm asking you to consider it because as, you know, a, you know, a staff member at the school, I got, this morning during my duty, I got 12 parents to sign this petition that see this every morning when they come and see me and bring their kids to school. So I don't know if you want this or not and everything like that, but I can continue to get petitions because I know you might need a certain amount, but like...
You're saying another speed camera?
Yes. And I know it's not, there's not a sidewalk there, but I mean, what's the purpose of having a 15 mile zone if they're not going to enforce that 15 mile zone? And I know I've called the chief and asked them, can you have an officer there? And I know that their manpower is, you know, few and spread apart, but, and I know that the other day I talked to an officer right there on 17th Street, but it's, I know, it's just not enough. So I don't know if we could take one of the cameras from the 17th Street that there's one, that we could take it and bring it down a little bit by our school?
I'm going to let the police chief speak on those cameras. He knows more about those than any of us.
Good evening, council, Doug Gurkey, police chief. Those, those cameras are actually in the Michigan corridor, so I'm not, I'm not sure what we're speaking about. I didn't get a chance, I was just trying to pull up the data, but I assure you, those speeders, anyone that's moving above the 11 mile an hour and over right now are getting citations.
You caught some people twice, I mean...
Yes, so one of the things, yeah, so at one point, we had the duplicate cameras in there, and what they were doing was hitting the same driver twice in the same period. So I know that we've looked at that, but I know they're entering from the north and the south bounds of the schools areas, and it's actually catching, catching quite a bit of people. I can clearly look up the data right now for you and actually get you all that information, but I assure you, based on the phone calls I'm receiving right now, people are definitely getting citations. Some, many, several citations in those areas.
Yeah, Mark, you'll probably see the results of that, you know, because as they start getting tickets, so you got to come up, Mark, you got to come up to the podium if you're going to talk to them.
We got to get everything on recording, I'm sorry, on the microphone.
I've asked my resource officer, and he says it's only going, it's only where the camera's facing, which is facing, if it's going from the bus barn right by that blinking light, it's only facing the license plate this way. There's no camera getting the cars going southbound toward me from the light.
No, there should be one on the north and south. It captures in two different directions.
I don't see one.
It was, okay.
But maybe I'm wrong.
I can talk to you after this, sir, we'll figure it out.
That's okay. I know that you're helpful and everything like that, so, but I just wanted to bring it to your attention, so if there needs to be one, that it can be taken care of because it's looking out for the safety of our students at both the middle school and the elementary, as well as for the community, because I mean, even the parents even see this every morning. Yes, sir. Yeah, I believe those cameras are what, six months old?
Yes, sir. And the data we're getting, the data we're getting is staggering of the people still speeding, and we put it out on social media all the time. So they're getting $100 citation every single time.
Right.
I know one person just got five citations and they're calling and screaming at me, so I assure you, it's work, the system is working, but I'll make sure, I'll be happy to speak to you offline here and we'll discuss it.
Sure, I appreciate it. I know you're very nice and helpful.
Yeah, absolutely. That's what I'm here for.
Yeah. Thank you. Thank you, Mark, appreciate you, sir. All right, and council member, I'm sorry, deputy mayor Gilbert.
Thank you very much. I heard councilman Fletcher said coach when you walked up, so I appreciate all you do for the kids and...
Do you want those petitions that I got?
No, we don't need any of that. Also, I would like to tell you that our chief is doing a wonderful job. We put security cameras everywhere, and we'll continue to improve.
You have to.
But thank you for coming up.
Because you mentioned, okay.
Thank you for coming up, and thank you for your service as a coach and a teacher. It's heartfelt, so that's the only comment I have.
Appreciate you, Mark.
I have this for Fletcher's son. Brother's son, yeah.
All right, next up, we got, we got Mr. Gordon Brown. Yeah, can we bring the mic to, do we have a portable microphone?
I've got a pretty loud voice on my phone.
Well, we got to get a microphone on you, Gordon. Well, you squeeze through there.
Gordon Brown, 912th Street. And the, hoping to figure out a way to deal with excessive trash from the new grocery store. If you drive down 12th Street, there is always bags and stuff, and it ends up in my yard, and I'm pretty sure I could get some other people to come in also. I have not taken pictures, I'll be glad to do it if it helps convince you, but daily we have to clean up a large amount of trash. I called, I think his name is Sean in the trash, for lack of a better word, trash division, and he said there's nothing he can do, because it's a private hauler. He said the right answer is that they have to have compactors. You just, for example, today, the lids are almost up at a 90-degree angle, so they're overfilling. I've gone into the store twice, asking, is there anything they can do? Oh, yeah, you, manager, wait here, you know, that kind of stuff. And so I'm stumped, unless you all have power, that's what Sean suggests they do, is bring it to you all, maybe you have power to make them get a compactor, or run fencing around it, or I don't have a clue. And I'd love to do city, old hotel next week, so I don't wear out my...
The city manager has something to add to your comments, sir.
Okay, great.
So I'm, I'm going to go ahead and have code enforcement go look at it. I just wanted to, where is, where on 12th Street? Can you tell me the state names?
Ohio and Indiana.
Ohio, okay.
And one more closer to town, whatever that one is.
Okay.
Yeah, I've already filed a complaint with code enforcement and same thing, they were curious if they have any jurisdiction over that.
So, so legal, myself, and code enforcement will get with solid waste, public works, and try to find a solution for you, and then...
The thing needs to be the management that manages the property. For example, if the grocery store had a broken pipe, they'd call somebody other than Mr. grocery store owner.
Well, the property owner is the one who would get a code enforcement citation, so...
All right. Appreciate you, appreciate you being able to manage to get it better, thank you.
Yes, sir, thank you, Gordon. Appreciate you, sir. All right, anyone else in the audience like to speak on the, on the citizens forum? All right, moving on to public hearings, will the clerk please read public hearing number one?
Final public hearing for resolution number 2025-097R, a resolution of the city council of the city of St. Cloud, Florida, establishing a final ad valorem tax millage for the city of St. Cloud for fiscal year 2025, 2026, the same being adopted prior to the adoption of the final budget for said period.
Jeff Cooper, finance director, this thing is not cooperating. Jay, help me out here.
There you go.
Okay. This is the final hearing for the ad valorem tax millage, and as per Florida statute 200.065, two public hearings are required in order to adopt a final ad valorem tax millage of 5.1128, which is 6.27% above the rollback rate of 4.811. And the rollback rate, as a reminder, is the same tax, tax dollars assessed as the previous tax year, not including new construction. The increase in taxable values for existing properties is not considered for ad valorem tax. Oops, went too far. Sorry, this thing is not cooperating. Okay. So one mill equals $1 in tax per $1,000 of assessed value. Property taxes are calculated by multiplying the assessed taxable value, property value by the millage rate and dividing by 1,000. So an example of, with our millage rate, of a property tax value of $100,000 would result in a city tax bill of $511.28. This is the 13th consecutive year with no increase, so as a more realistic example, $250,000 in tax value, value, value would result in ad valorem taxes of $1,278 for the city. General fund budget highlights, there's a 1% cost of living increase and a 3% pay adjustment for all staff, which is 1.144 million. Public safety union contracts, which also call for the same percentage of increases, 834,925. 13 new positions, eight of those being public safety. Increase in police and fire operating costs of 1.2 million. Increase in public safety pension costs of nearly $1.5 million. An increase in health benefit costs of 474,000. It keeps going. Okay. These are the new positions. We have two new school resource officers, they're newly funded, the positions actually already exist. And then we have four new police officers, a public educator slash inspector, a planner associate, two streets maintenance workers, a senior trades worker for bricks, a part-time park ranger, and a part-time grants assistant. And staff are recommending approval of resolution 2025-097R, and we're requesting city council approval of resolution 2025-097R.
All right, Jeff, why was this, why is it broken out separate from the budget if it talks about the additional staff or hiring? What's the purpose of that? Why would you have the staff in there? What's, is that...
Just to justify why the increase, the 6.27% increase, while, why we're maintaining the same millage rate.
Okay.
And it's required by statute for you, for this and the budget to be separate and voted on, this has to be voted on first before the next one.
Okay, thank you. All right. Anyone in the audience like to speak on this item? Council discussion.
Motion to approve resolution 2025-97R.
We have a motion approved from council member Urban.
Second.
Second from council member Paul. Madam clerk, please call the room.
Council member Paul.
Aye.
Council member Urban.
Aye.
Deputy Mayor Gilbert.
Aye.
Council member Fletcher.
Aye.
Mayor Robertson.
Aye.
Motion carries five zero.
Will the clerk please read item number two?
Final public hearing for resolution number 2025-098R, a resolution of the city council of the city of St. Cloud, Florida, establishing a final budget for the city of St. Cloud for the fiscal year 2025, 2026, the same being adopted following the adoption of the final millage rate for said period.
Jeff Cooper, finance director, before we start this, if you'll indulge me for one moment, I do need to thank all the parties that were involved in this, with the city manager's leadership, my fellow directors and their staff, the finance committee, which I failed to mention at the first meeting last week. And this process starts like it started eight months ago, so, and it involved meetings with directors and the city manager. The city manager sent several of us back to our respective drawing boards numerous times to make this as efficient as a budget as possible. We had individual meetings with each of you, which was something that we've not done in the five years that I've been here, so that was particularly helpful. The finance committee budget workshop, as well as the city council budget workshop, so thank you to everyone involved, and then of course, like my staff who helped put this all together. So as per Florida statute 166.241, the city is required to adopt a budget each fiscal year by ordinance or resolution. The amount available from taxation and other sources, including balances brought forward from prior fiscal years, must equal the total appropriation for expenditures and reserves. In other words, the adopted budget must balance, which it does. Okay, oh my goodness, it's malfunctioning. There, there was supposed to be another slide in here. Oh my God. Okay, here we go. So this is a total budget of $214.8 million. This is a 31.5% decrease from the current fiscal year. The primary reason for that is because of the public safety projects that were funded this fiscal year, which are of course not part of the next year's budget because they already have the funding for those. Also, all departments had an operating budget decrease, with the exception of police and fire and information technology. So this is a breakdown of, of the budget. General fund is 41% of your budget. The, the red one is actually special revenue funds, and that encompasses the utility tax fund, TOHO, OUC, those revenue sources, and then capital projects is very small this fiscal year. And our internal service funds, as you see there, are 7% of our budget. That's our self-insurance health fund, our self-insurance workers' comp fund, and our motor pool. Okay, general fund revenue sources, as you can see, ad valorem is 37% of our revenue, so it's a critical revenue source for us. The second biggest one is other revenue sources at 29%, and those are the aforementioned special revenue funds. So we get $12.2 million from OUC in the inter-local revenue sharing. We're getting $6.1 million from the TOHO inter-local fund, and we're getting $4.4 million from the utility tax fund. Expenditure-wise, as you can see, police and fire are 34% and 24% respectively, so 58% of our general fund budget of $87.9 million is dedicated to public safety. That percentage will likely increase as growth continues and we add firefighters and police officers in the future. Our general government is 24%, and that is the rest of us. Outside of parks and rec is the green. I'm not sure why that is not showing, but it's 10% of the budget is parks and rec. So these are the key focus areas in our strategic plan. So under diverse and magnetic economic development, we have the downtown public-private partnership mixed-use project, which is in process. Centennial Park improvements also in progress, and the downtown signage project, which is ongoing.
Centennial Park, that's the bathrooms.
That is correct.
Thank you.
Under high-performing government, we have 16 total new positions. We have the citywide 1% colon 3% pay adjustment. That is in line with the city of Kissimmee, and we're always in competition with other localities for the best quality staff. Security services for city hall, the finance committee, have to give them credit for insisting that be part of our budget, so you will see additional security for city hall in the months to come. Chief Gurkey is leading that effort. Some backup appliances for data protection for IT to support our cybersecurity effort, and the initial funding for a future enterprise resource planning system, basically a new financial system. So our first million dollars of what will likely be closer to $4 million has, has been put into a project for that, and we're in the process, working with the Government Finance Officers Association to create our RFP for that.
All right, Jeff, does the, can you go back, sorry? I think it's easier if we, if y'all have any questions as we go along, so I mean, there's a lot to unpack here. The security services, does that include a metal detector and a security rent, what do you call it, rent a, rent a cop?
Contractor, security contractor.
Yes, sir.
That's mall security. There's a movie about that.
Yes, sir, that is correct. Anything else on that one?
The 16 new positions, that's citywide?
That is citywide. That's the 13 and the general fund, of which eight are public safety, and there's also three driver collectors for sanitation to support the new areas.
May I ask a question, mayor, may?
Yeah, absolutely, you guys jump in whenever you need.
I understand the call up, that's understandable, and the 3% pay adjustment, how is that determined by? Was it different local governments? How did the 3% adjustment, I just don't know.
That's an experience adjustment, if you will, and the primary, one of the drivers behind that is our public and safety contracts already call for that for our public safety employees, so it was the city manager's goal to make sure everyone is getting the same thing.
Okay, so the pay adjustment...
Plus, we're competing with Kissimmee, which is...
Is fire and police involved with that also?
Correct.
Okay, thank...
They're, they're contracted, so they get a 1% cola and a 3% pay adjustment, so now everyone in the city is getting exactly the same thing.
Okay.
And that's, this is exactly what Kissimmee has given to their staff as well. Uh, under high-performing government, we have 16 total new positions. We have the citywide 1% colon 3% pay adjustment. That is in line with the City of Kissimmee, and we're always, um, in competition with other localities for the best quality staff. Uh, security services for City Hall, um, the Finance Committee, have to give them credit for insisting that be part of our budget, so you will see, um, additional security for City Hall, um, in the months to come. Chief Gurke is leading that effort. Uh, some backup appliances for data protection for IT to support our cybersecurity effort. And, uh, the initial funding for a future enterprise resource planning system, basically a new financial system, so our first million dollars of what will likely be closer to $4 million has, has been put into a project for that, and we're in the process working with the Government Finance Officers Association, uh, to, uh, create our RFP for that.
All right, Jeff, does the, um, can you go back, sorry? I think it's easier if we, if y'all have any questions as we go along, so, I mean, there's a, there's a lot to unpack here. The security services, does that include a metal detector and a security rent, uh, what do you call it? Rent a secu, rent a cop?
Contractor, security contractor.
Yes, sir.
That's mall security. There's a movie about that.
Yes, sir, that is correct.
Okay.
Anything else on that one?
Uh, the 16 new positions, that's citywide?
That is citywide. That's the 13 and, uh, um, general fund, of which eight are public safety, and there's also three driver collectors for sanitation to support the new areas.
May I ask a question, Mayor, may?
Yeah, absolutely, you guys jump in whenever.
I, I understand the colon, that, that's understandable, and the 3% pay adjustment, how is that determined by? Was it, uh, different local governments? How did the 3% adjustment? I, I just don't know.
That's an experience adjustment, if you will, and the primary, one of the drivers behind that is our public and safety contracts already called for that for our public safety employees, so it was the city manager's goal to make sure everyone is getting the same thing.
Okay, so the.
Plus, we're competing with Kissimmee, which is.
Is fire and police involved with that also?
Correct.
Okay, thank.
They're, they're, they're contracted, so they get a 1% cola and a 3% pay adjustment, so now everyone in the city is getting exactly the same thing.
Okay.
And that's, this is exactly what Kissimmee's given to their staff as well.
Uh, thank you for the explanation, I just didn't know where we came up with the 3%, but thank you.
I believe the county also is, is doing the same, if I remember correctly.
Yeah, I'm not, I'm not sure about the county, but, you know, we're trying to sort of keep up with, um, inflationary pressures and the market for jobs and what.
There was one time in my life that I, my next door neighbor bought a new car and I couldn't afford it. But I didn't buy a new car because I went to my adjust with a new car. Just couldn't afford it, so I, I just need explanation, so, so thank you very much for, for, for that, so, keeping up with the Joneses, I guess, what we would say with, with the 3%.
Yeah. Yeah, anybody else have questions, just jump in and ask, I mean, let's keep it kind of.
Thank you.
There's a lot of information that we need to go through, or see, well, Jeff, that Jeff has to go through.
Uh, under the key focus area of effective community safety, uh, again, the eight newly funded, new and newly funded public safety positions, um, construction of the Public Safety Complex Phase One, which was funded in this fiscal year, um, as well as Fire Station 35 and 36, uh, both, all three funded with the bond proceeds, um, which, um, just so you know, the city's bond rating did increase to double A, so we're the third highest rating and generally the second highest that most cities are gonna get, with the exception of very small cities like around areas such as Palm Beach get triple A, but, um, we're at, we're at double A for both S and P and Moody's, which is an increase over 2018.
Councilmember Urban?
Can I just ask you a quick question? I'm sorry. What, um, what is a public educator slash inspector?
It's a fire inspector that's also doing public education. It, it should probably say fire inspector slash public educator.
Is? Is that like when they do the inflatable house? Somebody teaching people? Fire chief, sorry.
Jason Miller, Fire Chief. Um, the public safety educator slash inspector position, it's a dual role position. We use it to, obviously for all the special events that we go out to with the Public Safety House, where we go to the schools. Last year, I think we did 9,000 elementary age school children. We taught them exit drills in the home. We brought our camper trailer out to some, but we also bought the inflatable house this last year, so we were able to get through these schools, and as we grow, get more students, the demand is there. Um, we're probably tracking an increase in public relations requests, and a lot of times, um, three, four a week sometimes, so this position is gonna be critical when it comes to reaching out for October, the special events on the weekends. The inspector portion, um, of this is where we're gonna actually save a little bit of money because we won't have to bring our inspectors in on overtime on Saturdays. This person's schedule is Tuesday through Saturday, as opposed to the typical Monday through Friday, um, so all those special events and those safety checks that we do on, on the food trucks and stuff like that, this personal handle, as well as.
Kind of keeps the marshal from going out. Is that?
A little bit. Takes a load off him and his two, the two other inspectors.
Mayor, when I was younger, uh, did you guys go to the schools to do the public safety stuff? Cause when I was younger, they used to tell us to duck underneath our desk in case a nuclear bomb was coming out from.
That's about the same time the tablets came down from the.
Is that, I mean?
We literally, we go and set up for two days at the different elementary schools, um, and we're out there running all, all the school-aged kids through either the inflatable house or the camper house, you know?
Awesome.
Crawl low under smoke, get out, stay out, call 911, don't go back in for your pet, don't go back in for your family, let us do our job when we get there, um, that kind of thing. So it's, it's a really beneficial program.
Is stop, drop, and roll still a thing? That's what they talk?
It is, but, you know, they, they've kind of backed off on teaching that quite so much, um, there's some reasons behind that, but I can't really, I don't wanna get into those right now here, um, but yes, um, stop, drop, and roll is still an effective manner of bringing yourself out if you're on fire.
Not if you're in the middle of a cactus field, you wouldn't do that.
You know, you gotta pick your poison, I'm just saying. A few quills or getting burned up. I think I'll take the quills.
Thank you, chief.
Thanks.
Thank you, sir.
All right, Jeff, thank you.
Also, the purchase of a new fire engine, a purchase of a new ambulance, replacement of 17 public safety vehicles, and, uh, some stormwater improvements on Tennessee Avenue and 17th Street. That was also funded this fiscal year, but that work continues. Yeah, we did that one. Keeps, this thing is not cooperating, sorry. Uh, effective transportation network, uh, we have the LaSalle Avenue extension, the Rumel Route, Road Round, Roundabout, some additional parking for Lake Shore, uh, master plan paving, and some additional paving, which is funded with franchise fees, so this is the first, uh, project funded with those. And with that, uh, staff is recommending approval of Resolution 2025-098R, and we're requesting City Council approval of the same. Any additional questions?
Anyone from the audience like to speak on this item?
Quick question.
Yeah, you have to come to the microphone. We'll get you a mic, give one second, Gordon. That's all right, we'll get you a microphone. No, we'll get one to you, here, hold on a second.
Being a newcomer to St. Cloud. Is there a workshop or? Anything for budget saving issues every year? Do you, uh, do you say, do we need volunteer firemen? Do you say, why is this the cost? Is that a workshop? Is the public allowed into something like that?
I'll let the city manager answer that, if she'd like.
So, y, yes, we have a budget workshop with the City Council, um, where we go through the budget in detail, and we also have a finance committee, um, that's made of citizens, and they meet quarterly, go over our budget, go, go over our finances, um, and they also go through the budget initially so that they can make recommendations to the City Council before their workshop.
But something like me couldn't go.
They're all public meetings.
Oh, they are?
They're all public meetings.
Thank you.
All right, anyone else in the audience like to speak on this item? Deputy Mayor Gilbert?
Jeff, I'd just like to thank you. I, I, I truly believe you do a great job, and you, you really, uh, you, you spend to taxpayer money like it's yours, and that's the coolest thing ever. When you have that, that's a good thing, so I'd just like to thank you for that, and have a budget decrease in today's ever-rising budgets. Uh, health went up 7%, uh, TOHO went up, OUC went up, and we just decreased, so, uh, you and your staff and all the staff, so I, I, I don't know how to explain it, but being a business owner, I, I certainly appreciate you and your efforts, so, uh, that's an only comment, not a question, uh, Mayor, and I yield back to you.
All right, thank you, sir. All right, I have a few questions. One, I, I'd like to talk about council contingency. I, I don't know that I'm comfortable not having a council contingency. I think there sure, should be a fund there that the council does have discretion, uh, if, if something comes up, and not changing it from whatever you're changing it to.
It's, it's still your contingency, it's just not within the council's, um, budget number. It's still, it's general fund contingency, so it's still there, you still have to act on it, it still requires a budget amendment, and it's 100% under your control. And it's $500,000.
So what's the difference between con, council contingency and not, and general fund? Why, why, why the change? If it didn't change?
I was instructed to do so, sir.
Well, I'm just, is there any, there was no change whatsoever? It's the same, just changing a name?
It was just for clarification purposes.
That is correct. Clarification of, you know, that it's not actually part of your regular City Council budget. It's separate, and what it's meant for, like hurricanes, unexpected events, that's what it's meant for, but.
Well, I mean, we've seen where it was trying to be used for other things, so that's why I, I got confused this whole, I'd say the past, you know, time on here, that it's not really just been for hurricanes, so what is the purpose of it?
It's for whatever you wish, sir, whatever the council's desire to use it for is.
I think we, we keep it as council contingency. I think that's, we'll keep it the way it was, I think that's the way it's been.
That will require a budget amendment to do that, sir, but.
Okay.
If that's the direction, that's what we'll do. It's, it's, all it's doing is changing, so now it's under account 0019,000 instead of 0011,000. It still requires a budget amendment, it is still 100% under your control.
Okay. I, I just think when it, when it gets brought up in the, chief? Oh. Uh, Fire Chief, yes, sir.
Um, just to put things in perspective, one of the line items that we have to answer for the SAFER grant is that all contingency item or dollar values have to be assigned somewhere. It's assigned specifically. So if you're assigning to a council contingency and it doesn't have a assigned purpose use, we're gonna have to record that, and that could hurt us in the future for getting SAFER grant.
But it's been council contingency?
But that's one of the steps we could take by having it assigned as a named value. So like where Mr. Cooper was saying, oh, it's there for hurricanes. It has to have an assigned name to it. It can't just be open for use, and that's one of the changes that.
Well, that's the problem I have with that, because then we can't use it for anything else other than hurricane, what if we don't have a hurricane?
Well, you could, well, you could do that at any time.
You're not assigning it then.
But you can say at any time, I'd like to use this money for this. It's, but it's through a budget amendment or through your action, but we, I, particularly as far as my department, would need those funds spelled out as a dedicated something.
Okay.
It can't just say contingency because it throws up all kinds of flags.
It was a recent, that was a recent SAFER change.
That was a recent SAFER change.
Okay.
So.
Well, and that would have been helped, obviously, if I had that information a long time ago, maybe I'd understand things a little better.
It just dawned on me when, when the question came up. So under the SAFER thing, it, it wants to know any unassigned contingency funds.
So are we getting the SAFER money?
Don't know yet. Your lips, your lips to God's ears. That's all I'm saying. I mean, but no, I, one of the reasons.
If it's gonna hurt us, don't, don't worry about it. I don't wanna hurt us, but I wish I knew that information before we walked in here today to vote on, you know, this, this budget, that's.
Well, and, and that was, that was new, and that came out in, what, July, when we applied for the SAFER grant? That was the first time we had seen that question.
Okay, thank you, chief. Jeff, do you have a, an organizational chart for the city?
Not with me.
We don't have one in the budget?
There will.
I've seen it in years past, and, and I.
Right, there will be one in the final budget book, yes, sir, and there's, was one in last year, that's provided to us by Human Resources.
Okay. Can, can, does somebody have an organizational chart? Do we have one made for the city, as we currently have, our directors and everybody?
I can work with them to pull it out.
Yes, please. Yes, please. Yeah, and I, I'm trying to get an understanding of where we are at this point, because I know you've said director, all directors report to you except for Fire Chief. And that's where I wanna see where these administrative positions lie, or shouldn't lie, you know? So we don't have administrative positions anymore. We don't have any departments under any directors, any, any, say, under Scott, because all, all departments, directors report to you.
They report to me, but Scott helps oversee.
Well, he can oversee.
Right, and Justin also helps oversee, um, IT.
But I don't wanna see a department underneath their name.
Gotcha.
I don't think that's in accordance with the charter. I, it's not. It says a person, doesn't say director, an administrator, this, that. We have to clean this place up, and, and, and now that we're talking about that, you know, because the one employee that we had was never qualified to be in that position, never been a director, should never have been over two directors, a, and we've seen what happened when, when that happens, and, um, Justin, we got something. And the other thing, if we've got Scott overseeing a number, I, I mean, Scott's amazing. Scott, I, I told you, you, just this past week, every time I walk by your office, I probably give you three or four, think, customer, or, um, citizens' comments or complaints, and, and you jump right on them, and I appreciate that, and I never ask you to stop what you're doing, but you do it anyway. But I think Scott's enough of a deputy or an assistant, I don't think we need another assistant. I think we're way too top-heavy on the third floor here, and I think that's a lot of the problems, because if the directors report to you, then I think Scott should be in on all the information as well, and, and I think you can do a successful job with that. I really don't think we need another person up here, um, because that's what happens. I mean, we've seen a, a pattern this past six months where multiple departments have, there's been issues.
So the strategic plan, um, administration is, is a, a, a majority of the work that we need for that additional person? I mean, if, if City Council doesn't want it to be at an assistant city manager level, um, we can go back and, and, and see, but we would need somebody for str, the strategic plan administration.
Oh, okay, yeah, I, I just think that's a lot of money to, to throw up into a position that we saw what we got out of the last guy, and, and that, that definitely wasn't worth the, the bang for our buck, so. Thank you, Justin.
Yes, um, I just spoke with Jay, they cannot pull it up on the screen, I can, I'll have to print a copy and put it on the projector down there, so I'll have to run down and get it to show you the structure that, um, is currently in place, so if you give me a few minutes, I can do that.
Okay. I, I'm just trying to understand, I mean, the, the, from the top down, what the city looks like, and I, I don't see it in the budget, and that's, you know, there's, there's a lot of money we're voting on, and I don't know the, the flow of, of the organization, and, and that, that's what bothers me, because I've looked at Kissimmee's budget, and they've got like seven or eight charts, and last year's budget had a chart, and I wanna see what positions we're committing to.
Our final budget book last year and this year will, has all of that information in there, sir.
Yeah, I saw last year's, but it's different now.
There's, we don't have our final budget book until this meeting is over, and then we start like working on it. All you've had so far is the, the budget workshop book. Um, we, perhaps we did not put a, an organizational chart in there, we can do that next year, certainly.
Well, I, I think I just wanna know what positions that, that we're funding here, you know? I think it's important to, to know how this is running.
There was a position breakdown in the City Council Budget Workshop Book.
Can you tell me?
And it's by department number, or I could send you a report that lists every single person and their position and their salary, if.
Yeah, I didn't see that.
That's what you want.
Which one had the positions? You said in the budget, it had the positions?
In the City Council Budget Workshop Book from a month, what, two months ago, or whenever that was, um, there was a breakdown, it's just pure numbers.
But I think things have changed since then.
It's numbers, no, sir. I do not believe so.
Well, we're not gonna have administrative positions.
What are you, I'm not certain what you're speaking of administrative.
Directors are gonna report to the city manager, there's not gonna be that extra layer of.
Yeah, who reports to who on this, on that form? It's pure numbers. Finance Department has this many in finance and this many in accounting. Procurement has this many in each division, human resources, it's.
Right. Yeah, that's not a.
That, that report is pure numbers.
Yeah, what I was looking for was the, the actual position that's funded. Like what, what positions are we funding? Like there's an assistant city manager position that was funded, I assume, in last year's budget, between 120, 180,000. I don't believe we need to fund that position. I think we need to look at it different, and, and, as the city manager said, maybe change it to something different.
Okay, the assistant city manager position is not a funded position in this budget, sir.
It was the strategic initiatives.
The strategic initiatives administrator was, because the funding is based upon the people that are in the positions in approximately May of each year, so the previous person in that position was here until very recently, so the strategic initiatives administrator is funded, the assistant city manager position, although it's a position, is not funded.
Okay, then I don't, I would, do not wanna fund the strategic initiatives administrator, whatever position. The last guy didn't work out so well. I'm, I'm just saying.
And what would you like to do with that funding, sir?
What's that?
What would you like to do with that funding? This will require a budget amendment, we can put it in budget amendment number one, take the funding out and put it somewhere else, or put it in, uh, contingency, if you wish, wherever you would like, whatever you would like to do with it.
Did we add any but, any police officers to the park? I know we added a, 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 a part-time park ranger.
A part-time park ranger, uh, two school resource officers, and four police officers, sir.
Okay.
That's what's in the budget.
But not a police officer at the park yet? We're not there yet?
I was not aware of any such a request, sir.
Okay. All right. I mean, what do you guys think about the administrator positions, assistant city manager? I've just, I, I don't understand.
I, with, uh, the exception to council, I'd like you to ask the questions you need. With the exception to council, I'd like you to ask the questions you need to be and I'll take notes and make comment on them because these are some things we have to really look at. So I just.
Yeah, that's what I just wanted to talk about it before we vote on.
I don't know what the other council members say, but these are things that are.
This is the report that I was speaking of.
And I think, yeah, those are valid, valid questions, so.
This is a three-year history of positions. This is required of the GFOA budget presentation award. So this will be in, has always been in our, our final budget book, which is not due until the middle of December 90. We have 90 days from this hearing day to complete the book because we don't, it's not the end of the fiscal year yet. So we don't have all the data in order to be able to do, do it.
All right. City Manager, can you explain the strategic initiatives position? What, what that entails? Because I don't. What I saw, a lot of it was a salesman and it didn't work. I mean, at least to us. And that wasn't, it just wasn't, I didn't, I really didn't see the value and what was going on with that department or with that position.
So our strategic plan, we have, this past year, we adopted a five-year strategic plan. And as part of that, we have annual business plans. So that person helps us tracking our key performance indicators, tracking the initiatives that are, that we're supposed to accomplish in order to achieve the goals identified in our strategic plan. We, that person helps with the legislative items, any necessary paperwork that we have to do for the legislative requests. That person also helps with, we have a website with our strategic plan on it. It's helped us with improving efficiencies by taking some of the new softwares available in Office 365 and helped us citywide with multiple departments coming off paper, trying to find new methods to do things now that we had this new Office 365 functionality. Trying to remember off the top of my head.
It is also required for the GFOA distinguished budget presentation award that we have a strategic plan that ties to the budget. So all items tie up to strategic plan items. That's why I listed them out, each one.
Yeah, I've never seen this.
And also the popular annual financial report. And if we get all three of those, we will be a GFOA Triple Crown Award winner and one of only like 250 in the entire United States and Canada.
And every time we get requests from League of Cities, things like that for surveys, because we kinda consider those part of the key performance indicators usually, metrics, that, that's one of those key tasks that that person also takes on. Helped us redo our capital improvement budgeting process this past year. We have a brand-new process right now that we implemented. Was about to, was working on our five-year capital improvement plan that we're moving forward with because the strategic plan is supposed to align with your capital improvement plan.
Yeah, I think we need to go through all of those things as a council and really dissect and see if that, those duties can't be split because those are all different types of job responsibilities that I think there's a lot of, he had a lot more time on his hands than he should have had. There is one thing here. I see the public safety administrator is just over the Fire Department, but so is not over the Police Department. Is that correct?
I think that's just a mistake.
Yeah, that's.
I think that's just a mistake.
Okay.
Yeah, he's definitely over the Police Department.
Well, I would hope so. I mean, I don't know what he does other than raise.
It's not necessarily, it's not necessarily a mistake. Yes, the police chief is over the Police Department just as much as I'm over the Human Resources Department. However, the police chief reports to the city manager, but the Fire Chief reports to the police chief under this structure. So that's the difference. That's why it's set up this way. It's just showing reporting relationships in that, in that sense.
So where are you, Justin? You at Human Resources?
Yes, I'm in Human Resources.
Okay, and you report to whom?
The city manager.
Okay, so there's a direct line and that's what I guess.
We all have a direct line to the city manager except for the Fire Chief, who reports to the police chief.
In the last, this past year, you were also over IT and procurement as well. So you were no longer over top of them in the organizational structure? They don't report to you at all?
Correct.
Okay. That's good. You were very knowledgeable in those things. I know we spoke on the phone regarding the, the, what was the, the cyber stuff, yeah?
Yeah, so the strategic plan is actually the foundation for your entire budget. So I can't speak to, you know, what the previous person did and didn't do, but the importance of someone in that role is why we have the budget that we do.
Okay, Councilmember Paul.
So when did that position get established? The last position that Abby had? Because I'm just wondering when, who was doing all of those tasks before that role became, you know?
Oh.
That's a good question.
Right. I feel like three or four years he was in that, in that role. I feel like three or four years. His title changed, but he was in that role for three or four years.
Because if we did away with it, I mean, my input would be I would like to see the funding go to public safety because, I mean, they can always use it, so.
Yeah, I agree. I think, I think there's too much money being spent into this. And I believe in all the goals on the wall on that, on that chart, but what is somebody just gonna sit there and stare at it and make sure we're still following it? I think every, I hope every employee in this building knows how to read that and understand it and follows it. I think it's, I think they did a great job with it. But I don't think we need to be paying somebody 120 to 180,000 dollars just to ensure that. You know, I think our HR manager or director, he knows, keeps everybody in line with that, with that chart.
Hey Jeff, when you said GFOA received an award, was it a participation trophy? What was the award?
No, the Government Finance Officers Association has three financial awards. One is for your annual comprehensive financial report, of which the city has received that award for all but perhaps two or three of the last 35-plus years. There's also the distinguished budget presentation award. The city had received it a few times up until the year 2000 and then did not get it again until about three years ago. And now we continue to get that award. And then they have a third award that's called the Popular Annual Financial Report. This year, we have submitted our first submission for that award. And if we do obtain that one, we will be a GFOA Triple Crown winner, which is, as I mentioned, very rare.
Thank you for the explanation.
All right. Hey Scott, do you have a second? You've been monitoring the park, the boat trailer activities, I guess, so the fees that come through?
Yes, sir.
You understand the, what we're getting out of it? Are we still working on other, other spots to charge in the future for public safety purposes down there?
That, the, that will be coming back before you during the November workshop as council had directed on additional paid parking options.
Okay.
That was, the city manager had sent that calendar out, I believe it was last week, that listed the upcoming workshop items and that was the timeframe that you had requested for that to come back before council. Because that gave enough time for the system in place, for everybody to test that out, make sure that we get all the kinks out, make sure that we can get enforcement straight on the PD side, make sure that the passes and everything were working correctly the way that we had anticipated it to be working. And so far, it's been working exactly as we had hoped it would.
Okay. Yeah, because that's one of the things that, you know, when I got, actually, before I got on, I called the Fire Chief and the Police Chief and I said, you know, I really like to see some officers down there at the lakefront and I would like to try and include one in this budget, a bicycle officer. Can the Police Chief come up here? I just wanna ask you a couple of questions on that and see if it's even doable.
Yes, sir.
We've spoken about this, about possibly a bicycle officer that could, you know, if there was a call maybe four blocks up in the grid from the lakefront, you know, they could just patrol the lakefront and there was a call, they could respond on bike, could get there faster than, than a squad car. Is that anything, if we were to put a position in the budget for that, is that something that would be beneficial down there?
We currently use our community engagement officers under Sergeant Stockdale. They've been actually taking a more active role patrolling that area. And even some of the CRA officers, as we're bringing them back onto our budget, they're still in the CRA also, but it gives them a little bit of a boundary that they can actually move down to the lakefront. So we're doing our best to actually get down there a lot more. I know we have a lot of issues even with the electric, the e-bikes and things like that. So we're starting to pay a lot more attention down there. But any amount of officers would actually help us, sir, you know that.
What would the cost, and you guys have bikes already, I assume there's extra bicycles?
Yes, sir.
What would that cost for an officer to be on a bike down there? I assume they'd have a car too, right?
Yes, they would.
You wouldn't leave an officer without a car?
No, they would get the entire package. So again, off the top of my head, I'd have to get you the exact numbers per se. But when we did it for the school board, we were trying to assess what a new officer would be with all the equipment and everything. So I think we're somewhere in the area with the equipment itself and the pay and benefits. Coop, I'm gonna ask, but I think we're somewhere around 210,000 or so. But that's the equipment, though. The equipment is costly to try to, to get the cars and everything else that comes with it. Is that about right? Sorry, Coop.
Currently, it's $106,000 for salary and benefits. And as far as the equipment, the vehicle, as a new position, you could get that out of police impact fees. And if you want to give direction to like add an additional officer, we could do that without actually affecting the budget right now because as I mentioned before, we fund all of our departments at 100% staffing and, you know, police is of course, unfortunately, never 100% staffed. So you could do it without actually adding any money to police at this time.
Mayor, I'd like to add that there will be initial cost, but once we have the equipment, that's.
That's the date, that's the boat.
It's already done.
Well, that's half the.
Right, that's half the, I don't know if half, but that's a, this will cost deteriorates. And just as you said, I, I'm amazed of everything that goes down at our beautiful lakefront in the safest city in the state of Florida. It's gorgeous. I mean, it's.
So we have actually also added a part-time park ranger also to help Demetrius down there as well. So there'll be a second person operating down there. The only problem is if we try to do one officer, and I'm not asking for a second, but we, they only, they work 12-hour shifts, so we need somebody on the days that he's off also to actually have him down there assigned all the time. So again, we use our community engagement unit extensively now to get around to those areas to make sure that they're on the lakefront and everything, so.
Yeah, I just showing some more presence down there.
Yes, sir.
You know, obviously, we've been getting emails and, and I just think it's important as our, our community continues to grow, there's more people using the lakefront for a thoroughfare and, and more people are down there walking and like the e-bikes and all that, so.
Yes, sir. And we have special operations. We have special operations happening down there right now. So in the mornings, they're doing extra traffic patrol. So our patrol officers are going down there right now and they're running radar and laser. So we're certainly down there.
Yes, sir. Jeff?
If I may, perhaps a recommendation would be we held back prior, or held down prior year fund balance intentionally on the chance that we do not get the safer grant. However, if we do, my recommendation would be, you know, we can add another number, two, three, four officers, whatever you like, because, you know, we'll have a more financial flexibility at that time if we were to get it. We're trying to be very conservative right now because if we don't get it, it's a stretch.
Okay. But we can find it for one.
Yes, sir.
Okay.
Can I ask one question? Mr. Stockdale's in the back and you're the community officer. Could you step up, please? It's a, it's a big position and I'm so proud of you having that position. So what are your plans for the lakeshore? As that, I guess that's gonna be part of his purview, is that right, Chief?
Yes, sir.
Okay, can I ask that question? Would it be appropriate? I'm sorry, it's the only time I get to talk to you guys.
I will follow under the lead of Chief Kirk here.
Best leader ever. I'm telling you, that dude's a stud. I don't know if you ever met him, he's, he's cool. That guy is, he's a keeper. Yeah, he's the best.
Down at Lakefront, we face a lot, a lot of obstacles from out-of-town boaters, out-of-town, any kind of recreation, the type of people. I think a lot of those initiatives down there are gonna be proactive policing measures. Having somebody out there on a bike even at night would be awesome. If we could work that in and get more officers, like Chief said, on a rotation, that'd be great. But yeah, whatever we can do as far as parking, graffiti, unhomed individuals, all the above, you name it, we'll handle it.
Well, if we get you that officer, you figure out how to use him.
I certainly will.
We don't wanna be in Portland or Seattle. And I think this is a proactive way to be that. And Chief and I met in January for the new, new laws of there's no tenting on public areas.
Car windows?
No, it means public.
He means public.
I know what he meant.
You know, I know. I've tried to get somewhere with it and just. In a different direction. But, but we talked about that in January because of the new laws, the state laws. But that's an awesome place.
Yeah.
And it's, it's one of the city's icon, I mean, you can go there at six in the morning, at six at night, there's 100 people on that place and they feel safe. And that's because of you two and that guy over there that's got the big arms. But, but that, those are, those are good things. So I, I think what the mayor's trying to look at, where we do to continue that safety as we continue to grow. And maybe I'm assuming things, but that's what I thought, Mayor. And I'm so glad you're there, Mr. Stockdale. I think you're gonna do a great job. I just, budgetary items, safety is it and safest city in Florida.
Yeah, it's a challenge, sir, to make sure that, and the community engagement team under Sergeant Stockdale, they're very busy. So not only doing community outreach, they're also doing proactive policing. When they're not doing something, go find bad guys and put them in jail. Make sure that they know not to come to St. Cloud. We work partnerships with the community, we're very close with them. But I also have them taking the boats out for Marine Patrol. They'll get down on the bikes and ride on the, but it's, it's a challenge because they're constantly getting pulled in a million different directions. And obviously, our patrol officers are out there going to calls for service and doing traffic elsewhere across the city as well. So, but it's just, it's another task that I'm gonna have to ask Sarge to, to take on for me.
Yeah, my heartfelt, you guys are awesome, so thank you.
Thank you, sir.
I mean, community engagements, there being officers but having fun at the same time, right? Water gun fights and that's all you do, right? Councilmember.
Yeah, I'm all for, for funding public safety and making sure that we have that well-funded in as many positions as we possibly can. Just on the topic of the strategic administrator, I would just like to get some more information about. My concern is I don't, I don't wanna put more work on our existing staff that would slow our progress down here at the city. And so this budget that we're passing, the number's not gonna change if we just put the, whatever was budgeted for that position into contingency until we can get some more information on that and then decide what to do with it at a later time. That's what I would prefer to do, but that's.
Yeah, I just think maybe shift it around to something till we understand what it is. It can stay where it's at, but it could split up into two jobs, but not pay 120, 180. It could be 80 and 70 or, you know.
Right.
One thing I wanted to add, you know, the reason I've been looking at that is, you know, we're about to pass the future land use map and we're adding commercial down at the lakefront. Our city's growing, we're annexing more and more, we're building more and more, not necessarily because we all want to, but it's growing down there. We're getting more complaints, people from out of town, you know, not always following the law. So we need, we just need the public safety out there. So, and I'll tell you, community engagement is the best because they're out there, they're interacting with the community, but they're all enforcement. And so if an incident happens, that's the best thing, is they're out there to take care of business.
Yeah, and if I can just add Sergeant Stockdale, running that unit, it's gonna be fantastic. Again, when there's nothing.
Homegrown guy too, he knows everybody.
Yeah, but when there's nothing happening, I assure you, they're gonna go out and find bad people. They'll do traffic enforcement, they will ride the bikes on the lakefront, they will take their bikes out and ride neighborhoods. They've been doing quite a bit and they're assisting with our criminal investigation division. So Sergeant Stockdale's done a great job so far of reaching out to all the units in the city. The Police Department is saying, what do you need from us? And we'll be happy to help you. So they're doing a fantastic job for us. It's a great unit that we started.
And the fact that we're the, the officers that were the CRA officers, it's no longer coming out of the CRA fund, it's coming out of the general fund, they can go wherever.
That's correct, but we still, we still have Officer McDonald and Corporal Fugere, who's gonna be retiring. They're still in the CRA. We certainly don't wanna marginalize the CRA. So yes, they're under ours, but we can move them. So, yes, they're under ours, but we can move them to, if we needed to, to bring, help patrol the lakefront. If we needed to have them come down there to assist. There were very strict rules with the CRA document that we had that would actually prohibit them from leaving the CRA. So, the fact that it's coming back into our budget, again, we're not looking to strip them out of there, but we can use them if need be, they can help us.
Okay. City manager, if we could do one officer at the lakefront on a bike, if we can figure that out? Is that consensus in that?
I need consensus.
Yep, you got thumbs up all the way across.
So, Coop, budget-wise, so that we, because I know to not have to have another meeting, you have to do it a certain way. So, is that, would that be a budget amendment?
Yeah, right now, we're, it will not be, it will not affect the budget. You're own, you're basically adding an officer to the staffing table. And then, at the end of next fiscal year, if by some stretch like police comes up a little short, we, that's why we do a final budget amendment of the year to make those adjustments.
Perfect.
We don't need to do a budget amendment, we don't need to change this particular annual budget. We'll just work it in there.
All right, Chief, I have one more question, I'm sorry. The part-time park ranger, what are his duties or his or her duties, whoever you hire in that position? I know they're helping Demetrius, but, I mean, he travels 17 parks a day.
And I think that's exactly what they're going to be doing is, at the time, we started to see if we can get an additional person to go help patrol the parks. They'll be similar to like a code officer, they can issue parking citations, they can do those type of things. But even Demetrius, you know, he has, he needs days off also. So, usually, we're going to do our best to make sure that somebody is working at all times. So, when Demetrius is off, the other, the part-time ranger will be working as well. And they'll have days that they'll overlap each other. So, especially on the weekends, maybe busy times, they'll be in the same areas. One at Chisholm, one at Lakefront, or they'll be moving around, at Runnymede, they'll be moving around to different areas. Especially as we start to take over more parks, it's very, very important that we actually have some good visibility of our park rangers.
Yeah, what do we have, park triangles on?
That's coming.
And there's other ones in the line.
Hickory Tree Park in the county is...
That's going to be a big one.
They want us to move quickly on that.
And that's, you know, my concern is especially at the ranch where we've opened it up for the public just to go out there, that's a big piece of property that we don't have anybody...
So, we have an officer that actually stays there, we have an officer that's there, but obviously, when they're working, they're not there.
Well, right, I mean, I assume they work...
So, if we can look at a mounted unit in the future, maybe horses, that'd be great, but I...
I'm sorry.
It's a heavy cost, mounted unit.
We've had that.
Yes, I know.
Yeah, Casey and Taylor.
But to actually patrol that, that would be great, but I, they come in at an intense cost, so.
Okay. All right, thank you, sir.
Yes, sir.
Any other comments from council for Mr. Cooper? All right, and do we have a motion?
Motion to approve resolution 2025-098R.
Motion approved, Councilmember Urban.
Second.
Second from Councilmember Paul. Madam Clerk, please call the room.
Councilmember Urban?
Aye.
Deputy Mayor Gilbert?
Aye.
Councilmember Fletcher?
Aye.
Councilmember Paul?
Aye.
Mayor Robertson?
Aye.
Motion carries 5-0.
Thank you, Jeff.
Thank you, sir.
All right, and next up, we have council action. Will the clerk please read item number one?
Discussing possible action regarding the appeal for the parking determination of Neptune Road Apartments, project PRK 25-00001. The subject property is located approximately north of 13th Street, east of Old Canuck Road and south of Neptune Road and west of Sergeant Graham Road.
Good evening, Melissa Dunkland, Director of Community Development. This case before you tonight is for a parking determination for the project known as Neptune Road Apartments, generally located at the corner of Sergeant Graham Drive and Neptune Road. The subject property is approximately 19.34 acres. The future land use designation is commercial with a highway business zoning designation. This use for multifamily apartments was approved as part of a conditional use permit in September of 2022. The applicant is proposing to construct a gated community of 336 multifamily dwelling units, which equates to a density of approximately 17.34 dwelling units, oh, sorry, 17.37 dwelling units per acre. Our land development code currently requires 2.1 parking spaces per unit, which is two per every unit and then one additional parking space for every 10 units. The total parking required per our land development code for this development is 706 spaces. Our land development code gives staff the ability to administratively approve up to 20% of a parking reduction. And this request has to be supported by a traffic engineer, sorry, by a parking study completed by a traffic engineer. What the applicant is requesting is to reduce the number from 706 parking spaces to 606 parking spaces, which equates to 14.16% of a reduction. Our concern is that if we eliminate that 100 parking spaces in this suburban mid-rise multifamily apartment development, that that could result in a corresponding shortfall in available parking spaces, potentially leaving up to 100 vehicles without designated onsite parking accommodations. So, the applicant is requesting to reduce the number of parking spaces from 2.1 per unit to 1.8 per unit. Here's a conceptual rendering of the proposed layout of the development, which includes the 336 apartment units. I would like to point out that they are half one-bedroom apartments and half two-bedroom apartments. They are also proposing 7.22 acres of open space. And they are proposing a 2.95-acre commercial parcel at that corner of Sergeant Graham and Neptune. Oh, and I also wanted to point out that the ITE manual, and I think that stands for Institute of Transportation Engineers, but, correct me if I'm wrong. Okay, so, the ITE manual does recommend for this type of development 1.3 parking spaces per unit, but it was because of the 100 total spaces that staff was concerned and we wanted to bring this forward to you for approval. So, staff on June 20th, 2025, did recommend denial. And we are also requesting that city council deny the parking determination for Neptune Road Apartments. We do have the applicant, Joe Thacker, here, who I believe has prepared to speak on this item and staff is available for questions as well.
All right, thank you. And would the applicant like to speak?
Good evening, Joe Thacker, 17 South Orlando Avenue, Kissimmee. Thank you all for adding me to your long day today, I appreciate it. This is an appeal from the parking variance requested. As Ms. Dunkland pointed out, staff does have the ability to do a 20% reduction pursuant to your code. We're asking for a 14% reduction, which equals 1.8 spaces per unit. And as Ms. Dunkland just pointed out, the ITE manual is at 1.3. So, we're far exceeding what most people consider to be adequate parking. Your code is just very intense on multifamily parking. So, again, I'll remind you all, this is an apartment complex that's already been approved. It was actually approved for the whole area. And what they did, so it's approved for more units than what they're proposing. And so, they backed off the unit number and added the commercial piece. And so, that's how it came about. It does have more open space than required. It's got 7.2 acres, it's only required to have 4.8. So, if the parking variance doesn't get approved, they will need to take up a lot of that extra grass area, passive and active recreation area and reduce it down. And they also would have to take parking from the commercial property, which would reduce what would be allowed to be developed on that commercial property. At three acres, it can handle a nice size commercial development. After you take it down with the parking, it would be less, probably closer to one and a half acres. So, I would remind you all as well that the city has done a lot of, well, not a lot. They have granted like-kind or greater reductions in parking for apartment complexes. And there are not any code enforcement problems or violations that have come to the attention of staff because of those variances that have been granted in the past. So, there's really no anticipation that this would be an impact on code enforcement or your police officers as well. The other thing, this is gated. So, the parking, the management company can control how many parking spaces you have and how you are parking. It doesn't impact any public roads, they're all private. So, there's not an overflow into the parking area to the public realm. The other thing I wanted to point out is, this is your most urban apartment complex. They can walk to jobs, they can, and you're by Publix, you're by Walmart, you're by restaurants. You're, you can maybe get a job downtown because you can ride your bike. You're connected by trails, you are, you have two schools close by to you. So, there's, there's a lot of benefit to being within this location where you don't have to have a vehicle to survive. You can actually get on a bus too, right at 192. They're right next to 192, behind the gas station. So, I think if there's ever a project that actually deserves to have a parking reduction, it would be this one. The other thing, I know there's concern about the proliferation of car washes, tire stores and self-storage, thank you. My client is willing, so right now, self-storage and car washes are permitted and they could go put them up right now because they're highway business. So, they could build it, they don't have to build their apartments, they could just put in self-storage and car washes.
Quit trying to scare us.
No, I'm trying. So, they, they have agreed to put a condition that where, none of that can be built without a conditional use. So, it would be totally in your discretion of whether to grant those uses in that commercial. They are willing to say, it's up to you all, we don't, we're not planning on putting it there. If you don't want it there, you don't have to grant it. So, they, for someone to restrict their property like that is pretty impressive. And they are willing to do this because they are ready to move forward with their project. They'd like to get this determination done so they can move forward, the construction plans are already filed. So, that is what I have to offer to you all tonight. And I would be happy to answer any questions you may have.
Yes, ma'am, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Would anyone in the audience like to speak on this item? Mr. Brown, Scott, can you please, one second, he'll bring the microphone to you, sir.
Two things, obviously, in the whatever 103-degree heat, these people are going to enjoy the bicycling. They, they won't want a second car to help with getting to work, according to your plan. And the other minor thing, if there are a lot of, is there a delineation of how many studio apartments there are?
Yes, ma'am.
Half of the units are one-bedroom and the other half are two-bedroom. And the other thing I forgot to mention is that they have agreed to put extra bike racks and cover all bike racks as well.
Yes, ma'am.
One-bedroom would still demand, you know, two people in general these days.
Yep.
And so, they'd want two cars. They are bicycling in Florida weather, I'll tell you right now.
Thank you, sir. Anyone else in the audience like to speak on this item? And Deputy Mayor Gilbert?
Well, through the metro plan, we've looked at alternative transportations. And this is a location where there is a bus stop. There's a police station right down there, I know they need more folks so they can apply for a job there and walk there. In the community itself, it is contained, so it's a gated community. And I'd have to ask the police chief, you know, where do they park if they can't go there? Do they go to Walmart or do they go and have to walk? That's just, I don't think that's an issue for the citizens of St. Cloud. This is a contained area with a gated community. It will be up to the management company, the owners, for rent, for people to live there or not. If there's a parking issue, they might not rent there. And, you know, I had a one-bedroom apartment, but I could only afford a half a car at that time. So, those things where, you know, where that, I had a motorcycle, so it just kind of fit. But, but we don't want to discourage it, but the location seems good for, for public transportation, with the buses to be there, with, with the transit to be there, with the biking and things such as that. I like storage units, I have a friend that owns some. But I'd certainly rather it be housing for individuals. And that's going to be close to our medical city, our MAC, that's going to develop there, I hope, in the future too. So, that's it. I do think one- and two-bedroom apartments are affordable. The cut-down for 100 parking spots, I would like to say that's a city issue, but it's really not because it's a private entity. And if the people don't want to rent because there's no parking or anything like that, I don't want to push it off, but that's a gated community. Where else would they park? What neighborhood would it affect? What public place would it affect?
Are you asking the director?
Yeah, I'm asking, I mean, where would it negatively affect other structures?
It shouldn't negatively affect any other property.
I did, I used to call it bird's eye view, now it's a drone's eye view. I did that over this facility and I looked at other areas that could affect. It's self-contained almost, is it not?
Yeah, can we bring the plan back up, Melissa? Go back one slide or two slides? I think it's two slides. Yeah, thank you. Councilmember Urban?
Were you done?
I'm done, sir, thank you for allowing me to do that, council.
I've never subscribed to the idea. I know in a perfect planning world, in a planning textbook, people walk everywhere and it's a beautiful utopia. I don't see people walking across 192 to Home Depot or to Walmart. With that being said, you're right, Deputy Mayor Gilbert, it's going to be contained into this area and it's gated. And I do appreciate that they've committed to not doing a storage unit or tire shop or what else was it, a car wash on the commercial area.
Or dental.
Or dental. I would like that, I think I brought this up before. I would like all storage units and car washes and tire stores to be conditional uses everywhere in the city. But that's a hill to die on for another day, so that's all I can say.
Councilmember Paul?
All right, so, Ms. Thacker, this development was approved when?
'22.
Oh, okay. And then, with the decrease in the parking spots, we talked, I know I met with you and you indicated that there would be amenities. Can you please describe what amenities would be there for this complex?
There's a clubhouse, there's a large pool area, there's a dog area. There's a dog area. There's a trail around the big, that big pond area that has benches and other type of recreational activities. There's a large open space that's supposed to be for the people to be able just to enjoy a little more green space than what you normally get in a multifamily project.
Thank you.
Nope, Joe. I didn't get to talk yet.
I'm sorry.
You and I met on this. And you know, I was, I was at first against, you know, the reduction. But this is a gated community, correct?
Yes.
And I do appreciate the fact they're not, they, you know, will make that a conditional use, as Councilmember Urban said. I did see, is that a little pedestrian thing you put in there that we talked about in the top right corner?
So they are going to try to seek.
By Jimmy John's.
Yeah, they're going to try to seek that. They don't, we don't, I don't know if they can get permitted or not.
Okay.
But they will.
If they can, because that would truly make it a walkable, you know, at least they can go get their groceries. They can go to Jimmy John's, they can go to whatever the heck is in that.
Nature's table.
There's banks, nature's table.
Bank.
That's, I like it. Yeah. So that, that parcel, the three acres, is that going to be parceled off of the rest of this?
Yes.
And keep it highway business?
Yes.
Okay. I look forward to the, the great restaurants on that. City Attorney?
So it seems like the consensus is to, I'm just reading room, to sort of approve, to approve the request by the applicant with the conditions that Mrs. Thacker requested.
Yes. Well, that's as I understand it. I do see, I'm sorry, Joe, the, the little, what I had just pointed out. I think that's where Jimmy John's is, right? No, I think we had talked about.
Jersey Mike's.
That's what I said. Same kind of restaurant, right? Jersey Mike's, yes. Sorry. You're right. It says garbage compactor, but I guess all you'd really need is a sidewalk to connect to that. Do we know who owns the ditch?
That's the problem.
Okay.
Is the ditch.
There's other issues with the ditch still, right?
Yes.
Other, okay. We still got to iron out. Okay. Thank you.
And Mayor, so with, along those lines though, this is an appeal of a parking determination.
Right.
So the only way to incorporate those conditions would be into a separate agreement, which we've discussed with the applicant about doing. So if you're going to consider this, excuse me, you also need, will need to have a development agreement that refers to the, the two conditions that Mrs. Thacker presented. So if that's inclined to where we do, we can certainly go through that right now to, to address it. So I guess that's why I was asking if there's a consensus for the city council to approve the reduction subject to those two conditions we talked about.
Yeah, the pedestrian thing, that's if they can do it. I'm not, I'm not going to make it a condition on that. That's if it's even possible. But with the rest of it, yeah.
Okay.
No storage units.
So, so the two conditions that, that have been discussed tonight would be, there would, there would be no, there would be no storage facilities, no tire stores and no car washes on it as a matter, as a permitted as a matter of right. However, they would be allowed with a conditional use permit issued by this council or a future council. Are we still sticking with the 10-year piece? They, they are asking that that condition be only for a period of 10 years. So after 10 years, assuming there is no conditional use permit issued or no other use permit, then the owner of the property would have, those conditions restrictions would no longer be applied and they could build whatever they want in the appropriate zone.
My, my thinking on that is threefold. One, the opportunity, as Councilmember Urban said, to change your code to make those things conditional uses. If y'all haven't done it within 10 years, you're probably not going to do it.
None of us will be here in this seat.
And so, and, and the other thing is it should be developed within 10 years, therefore probably not redeveloped into any of those within that period of time. And a restriction longer than 10 years on property is a little harsh. And so those were my three reasons why the 10 years was picked.
They're selling the parcel anyway. I hope they sell it within 10 years or I'd get a different real estate broker.
That's what I mean, exactly. And develop, not just, I mean.
Ten years from development order? Ten years from now, whenever we give it grant, that's fine.
And then the other condition was, as Mrs. Thacker mentioned, was the additional bike racks and the covers for the, for the bike racks.
Last question. So do they plan on developing this themselves and owning it, owner, operator of it?
Yes.
Okay. The folks that I met with, the developers?
Yes.
Okay. Thank you. Yes, ma'am.
Good evening. If I may, the fire chief had a request, so I'll let him make it.
Rain on our parade.
Nope. Short, simple and sweet. My only request is if you do grant this parking reduction request, that you provide some sort of language that they can't provide, do parallel parking on the end caps of those apartments and narrow down those driveways. Trying to get engines through there or our tower truck would be an absolute nightmare if we have people that are quasi-parallel double parked on those end caps.
Do we have it on here as per, I don't see?
It's not, it's not designated as parking, but I can tell you from some past experiences we've had with other apartment complexes, when the parking spot's filled, they will find wherever they would like to park. So I'd like some kind of assurances that management will
No parking signs?
Ensure that those areas are clear because it would be a bad day if we can't get some fire trucks in there. So on the end caps of the apartments where there's currently only parking on the opposite side, I'd like that at least labeled with no parking or towaway zone or something like that for management to be able to do that. You know, the areas where there's parking on both sides of the roads, that's not the, that's, I'm not concerned about that. But it's where it's the single parking side. So on the south side of that commercial parcel, you see the end cap of that building, there's only parking on the, up against the commercial side. I can foresee people parallel parking along that end cap. So I'd want to make sure that there's no parking along that.
So basically, you're looking at something that would require the owner to monitor and make sure that people only park in designated parking spaces?
Yes, sir.
That works?
That's fine. And it also could be marked on the construction plans. And maybe they put some bushes there so they can't park there. So there's ways to, to make sure that happens.
I do like how you laid it out there that if we required more parking, they'd eat up the park space, the additional park space that's there. So I think I would rather have the park space than more parking spots. Grass is better than asphalt. All right. Any other council comments? Can I get a motion?
Motion to approve with the conditions. Do I need to read them out?
So the conditions would be, obviously, the motion to approve would be to approve a parking reduction from 706 spaces to 606 spaces. And then that the, the uses of car wash, tire store or storage facility would only be required on the property with a conditional use permit issued by the city council. And that would, restriction would remain in place for a period of 10 years from the effective date of agreement. The owner agrees to place additional bicycle racks and, and to cover all the bicycle racks. And the last condition would be owner shall ensure that parking, all parking is in the designated parking spaces.
Can Councilmember Urban repeat that into the record?
Motion to what he said. Motion to approve with what the city attorney just read.
Motion approved, Councilmember Urban.
Second.
Second from Councilmember Paul. Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Deputy Mayor Gilbert?
Aye.
Councilmember Fletcher?
Aye.
Councilmember Paul?
Aye.
Councilmember Urban?
Aye.
Mayor Robertson?
Aye.
Motion carries five zero.
Thank you all very much.
Yes, ma'am.
Thank you.
All right. Well, the clerk, please read item number two. It's just discussion.
Discussion regarding legislative projects for consideration.
Are we voting on this?
I need direction. So in your packets, you received several potential projects that we could ask for legislative appropriations next year. And I need to get direction because I believe it's October 27th is when the delegation will be meeting where we have to present which projects that we're interested in. So I, in your packet for consideration, I would recommend, based on the enthusiasm that we saw from Representative Stark and Senator Arrington, and our lobbyist also thinks it's a good project, that we try again for Hopkins Park Stormwater. However, it was a veto from the governor, so there's a chance he would veto it again if the council doesn't want to take that chance. Some other projects, Mr. Carmody said that replacing the outdated lightning detection systems in the parks and facilities, he thought that was a good project also. And then we put a few road projects on here. We put Creekwoods Drive, which staff has been working on. But if we could receive some state monies, that would be good. We have the extension of LaSalle Avenue, which you saw was in the budget. It does help when we're able to show that we're putting money towards the projects also. South Florida Water Management.
I'm sorry, did you say LaSalle?
Yes.
Connected there, okay.
Yes, which will connect to Orange. The C-31 Canal, South Florida Water Management District asked us to support them on that. If you remember, a few years ago when we had the hurricane and the flooding, they opened up the gates to that canal and they were damaged because the amount of water and as fast as it was moving. It was built as an agricultural canal instead of an urban canal. So they, they, they said that they were going to be asking for funding themselves and they wanted our support on that, which I would recommend if it's not costing us anything. Assuming they put in for it, that we would just have Mr. Carmody also support going for it. And yes, a letter.
Not financial support?
Correct. Yeah, I, I, when, I, I did not offer the, I, I did, I was not supportive of that when they brought it up. Another project, I, I, I think it has a low chance is the ERP implementation that, you know, we've been working towards. And then we have on the list the new EOC and Communication Center equipment, but that's a better federal project than it is as a, as a state project. Also, well, so, so those are, I, I have a few non-monetary ones I'd like to discuss. But first, if I could get consensus, you know, on, on these, we have Mr. Carmody. And if, at the next council meeting, I believe we're going to be bringing forward the Olay agreement if the council wants to pursue that. Again, there's a potential, you know, another group of lobbyists to help us. But Mr. Carmody has also been very successful helping us with projects recently. So looking forward.
Blair's doing the federal side.
Yes.
Okay.
Yes.
When you, you said the second one was lights at parks?
Lightning detection system.
Where did I get lights at parks? That was just in my head. When Garrett brought that up about riding at the, at Lakefront, do we need better lighting out there at night? Or do we want to keep it dark?
The park is supposed to be closed at sunset.
I think the parking lots need better lighting. I've, I've walked there and walked in the parking lot and I witnessed, I think, our chief saved somebody that tripped down the stairs. And he, I, I called him because he's a paramedic, he's a Superman, he changed into everything. And he took care of the lady. You remember the incident? But, but there, there is some lighting issues in the parking area. And we had talked about the parking area before of making it open parking after dawn so the people that park their trailers could park. But I haven't seen any signs of that. But the lighting, I, I think you know exactly what I'm talking about. It might be a bulb change, it might be, but, but that's, when, when we said that, that came to mind. I'm sorry. I yelled back, mayor, but that's.
Yeah, for some reason, I guess I heard that in my head, lights at parks. Councilmember Urban?
I, I know it got vetoed last year, but I'd really like to try again for the Hopkins Park funding. I, I, I think that should be a priority for us and I'd like to try it again.
Okay. Do, has any, has our lobbyists, have they spoken with any of the governor's staff to kind of see, check the temperature on that again, to see if, what the flavor of the year is going to be?
I, I just sent him these projects and asked him for input on them. And I would say that the two that he replied back were good projects, were the Hopkins and the lighting. I asked him if road projects had a chance because we've been vetoed in the past or we haven't even made it in the budget before on, on road projects. He said that he thought that we would actually have a good chance to get it in the budget because Representative Stark is the vice chair of, I think, the Appropriations Committee or one of those committees. And so he, he thought that we would, we, 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 doesn't know that we would survive the veto, but he thought it would have a, a better chance than we've had in the past.
Yeah. And, and you know, I've run into that with my own stuff with the nonprofit I run. To me, when you have a good project, you got the right team, it's easy to get in the budget. The problem is, what's the temperature of that one person? And, and if we can get an indication of what they're looking at this year. I don't, I don't know if he even knows or his staff.
He hasn't given me any.
But I do agree, we should go after it again.
Do you think so, mayor? Because I think we're almost at the finish line. Both Representative Arrington and Stark had said, keep those, put them back.
Oh, yeah. No, I, I support it.
You support that, I think so, yeah.
Well, yeah. No, I'm, I'm just asking with the temperature of the governor's offices.
And you don't know that, you know.
Well, somebody calls him.
Yeah, well, you made it, you need to take his temperature. There's two ways to take time, three ways, but you have to take his temperature. But it got all the way, it got, I'm sorry, it got all the way to there. It got all the way to the governor. So I think we're there, right? I, I, I don't know.
Well, that's, it's half the battle.
Right.
Half the battle is getting there. The other half is surviving the battle.
Yeah, it's the finish line, so.
No, I support it. I was just wondering if, if we know, if we have a, a better feeling. Because first time, it's easy to accept the loss. The second time, it becomes bitter. You know?
The, the difference this time, I think also, is the way we write it. He said, we're going to have to be different because potentially the project will be already starting before they actually give the funds. So he said, we have to be careful how we write it so that that's clear. And, and I asked if that was going to hurt us. And he said, no, we just have to be really clear that, so that they know that we're, we're moving forward with it.
So that's the one we want, number one? Is that what it sounds like?
I think that's what, that's what I'm getting from faces.
What was last year's number one, the boat? Or, oh, no, the tiger damming thing? Or maybe this one was, I don't remember if we had.
I, 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 I think Representative Stark prioritized the ones, and I think she put Hopkins first. I mean, she, she prioritized them. I, I don't, I don't know that we actually said specifically.
Oh, we didn't?
I, I don't.
But we do, I think we want to push Hopkins. I think we want to tell our representatives that.
It's our top.
Because that's if we're going back in for it again. Councilmember Paul?
I just have a question. If we try again with Hopkins Park and the governor decides to veto it again, what would be Plan B as an alternate from there? Because I wouldn't try again after that, but what would be an alternate, you know, alternate to move forward on that?
We'll still be moving forward if that's what your question is.
Yes.
It's already in our budget. It's, 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 we're just asking for funds to help us with it. But we, we are moving forward with it regardless of whether we get funding or not.
Okay. Thank you.
Do you think we'll, we'll be digging the pond before session?
Before they get the agreement signed.
Before next June.
You know, maybe, hopefully, we're still dealing with the, with the lift station issues. But hopefully. So that was clear. Last year, I mean, we did ask for multiple projects. So do, do we want to ask for the, it seemed like there was interest in the lightning or maybe it was just discussion?
Well, the C-31 Canal had, that has nothing to do with.
It's no money from us. We just say we support it.
Okay, right. So the three that we're looking at asking is LaSalle, well, you had four on there.
The lightning, Creekwoods, LaSalle. I, I don't, I really don't recommend the ERP.
Creekwoods, they're not going to give us, I don't, I don't see Creekwoods as something they're going to give us. And I don't think LaSalle either. Everybody's got those kind of issues around the state. That's not a, Hopkins, because it's tied in many uses and many fixing a lot of problems are. The lightning where? Lightning protection where?
It's eight lightning detection systems at the ranch. There's two at the ranch, one at Chisholm's, one at Hopkins, Lakefront, Stephanie Lee Rothstein Park, the Civic Center and the Aquatic Center. And the cost is $116,270.
I mean, that's a matter of public safety, so I think that's a, that's a safe one.
I see two nods. I see three. Yay, yay, yay. Okay, so Hopkins and light, and the, and the lighting will be our, is what we'll pursue. I have some non-money monetary. So obviously, they're, they're still looking to do some property tax reform, which I think the city council has seen how much we rely on property taxes. So we would recommend that we be ready to have Mr. Carmody oppose any legislature that would reduce our property tax or sales tax funding.
Yes.
Okay. Anything that's supporting home rule? They, they seem to every year start taking away the rights of local government. They, they seem to every year start taking away the rights of local government and, and taking that up to the state level. So I saw three nodding on that. Senate bill, well, before we go to Senate Bill one eighty, CRA. I did not remember to add it on here, but as I was driving here, I realized, oh, I don't have the CRA on this list. They, today I, at the planning conference, sat through a two-hour legislative session where they talked about what passed this past year and what they're expecting this year and they're, they're expecting all of those bills that.
Well, that was, was that Corey Mills that filed that one? No, not Corey, who filed, not Corey Mills, that was, um, oh gosh, the guy that's now the, the Lieutenant Governor.
Yeah, I think you're right.
He filed, um, oh my gosh, where's my brain tonight? It's only been six hours of hanging out with you all.
Well, they did expect that to come back.
I think, I think that's, um.
And we already know that, we hope we get an extension, but we definitely don't want to be limited. So I, I see two nods, three nods, thank you. And then.
Well, what I was saying is it may not come back if, you know, if somebody else doesn't file it, hopefully.
They seem to think it was going to come back. Property tax, oh, sorry. And then Senate Bill one eighty. We, we saw how, how it has restricted our ability to do some of the things that the city council has asked for, you know. We've received direction that you want us to make certain uses harder to get in the highway business. We were talking about several of them earlier tonight and we can't do that right now with Senate Bill one eighty. We can't make those changes, I think it was until twenty twenty-seven. And that's assuming that there's not another hurricane that we're in the path of, which would then cause that timeframe to continue to expand. So I just have on here, watch anything similar to Senate Bill one eighty to make sure that anything that happens that could restrict our ability over development and land use planning after the hurricanes, that, that we, we give Chris direction that we don't want to be restricted further. And if anything happens to make it easier, which I don't think that's going to happen based on what I was listening to today, that, that we just have him, him ready to help us. But Mr. Manzerris and I were talking and he's going to tell you about some lawsuits that were filed about Senate Bill one eighty.
Mr. Manzerris?
Thank you, thank you. So first thing, I, I would encourage the council to get, to encourage your lobbyists to work on it. I think like a lot of bills that come through the legislature, this one needs to be addressed and, and probably tweaked a little bit to make sure it goes to whatever the true intent of the bill was. Because I think there's a lot of folks in this arena that do not think that the intent of the bill, which was, which was couched within essentially an emergency management bill to deal with properties that had been damaged by, by storms and hurricanes and to prohibit local governments from being more restrictive and more burdensome on the ability for those properties to basically survive the damage that they sustained, which I think most people agree is a fairly reasonable requirement. But it's been expanded and as you've probably heard and followed the newspapers, looks like Orange County is going to be involved in a fairly significant lawsuit that will ultimately get to this Senate Bill one eighty. There also is a movement among some cities and counties that are getting together to actually challenge it. And as of last count, we've been, we've received information from one law firm that's willing to, has asked, and I think many of you may have seen the same email, has asked for municipalities and counties to join a lawsuit that they are filing, they're actually, my understanding is they're filing it actually today. But that, they were going to file a lawsuit to challenge Senate Bill one eighty and this most particularly this provision that prohibits a more restrictive or burdensome amendment to the city's comp plan or land development code. So we have the option of joining that to be able to address it. As the city manager pointed out, you did provide certain direction about certain things you, you, you may have wanted to see happen that would fall into that category of being more restrictive and more burdensome and likely would be invalidated should you were to do it as you, as you've directed at this point. And so we, we, this bill would actually, would prohibit that. We also have been working, as you know, you've been working on your future land use map changes and the comp plan, and we've been working with planning staff to make sure that those changes to those properties are, we've actually made them almost less restrictive to, to address the concern of Senate Bill one eighty. So we think we've got it in a point where we could survive a challenge on the Senate Bill one eighty. However, this is a new law that's out there that will not fully be vetted out until some, there is some litigation that's, that's, and a court has made some determination about how it's going to be applied. So we want to make sure wherever, I think the lobbyists, it's a good task for the lobbyists to work. Gray Robinson and, and Mr. Carmody, they work with several municipalities and counties, so I'm sure we're not going to be the only ones that are telling them, you need to, you need to watch this bill.
We're going to sit on the sidelines and watch the lawsuit, right? We're not going to put our input into that. We don't want to.
Well, that's, that, that's, I wanted to bring it to your attention.
Pope the Bear in Tallahassee.
I am, we've discussed it and we've actually, we've, we've discussed it. I don't think, I'm not at this point recommending that, that the council agree to participate in that lawsuit. I think, I think the way the city does its development and plans and be able to do that, as you know, we have most of the development that we're having that would be, that would address some of these land development comp plan changes come through annexation, properties coming into the city. And we, I think staff has done a really good job working with developers who want to be part of the city and work to be part of the city to, to basically work on the agreements and entitlements and, and through the use of annexation agreements and the tri-party agreements with the county that we have related to stuff, so that really it's more collaborative with the property owners. So even though there might be changes that you might see, you might see as, seem as the general public might see as maybe being more restrictive or more burdensome, they typically, in the city scenario, they typically work out through a negotiation with the property owner. So the property owner is good with them to be able to address it. So I don't really see it as a, as an issue for most of the things that the city of St. Cloud does. It is an issue with regard to the future land use map and some of the overlay districts we may have been talking about, but we're dealing with it on the future land use map to basically address, to keep it, to make it survive a one eighty challenge if we got to that point. And so I'm not at this point recommending you, the city participate in that lawsuit. However, we did want to make sure you're aware of it so that we can have, get some more direction at this point.
Thank you, sir. All right, so we've already given consensus on item number two. We're good to go.
You, you agreed on the one eighty, just not the lawsuit, which I wasn't recommending the lawsuit, but not a lawsuit.
As a city and as a person, as an individual, the answer would be no. No participation in lawsuits and I appreciate the lawyers in the house and stacker, but we're going to, we're going to watch from afar.
No offense to the attorney.
We're going to watch afar. We don't, we don't need to be a part of a lawsuit.
But, but we're good with any legislation about, similar to one eighty, that, that we participate in that, just obviously not the lawsuit.
Let somebody else pay for the legal bills.
Well, I, I meant the lobbying at the state, not the, not the legal.
Again, I, I, the pleasure of the council, let's sit on the, on the sidelines on this one.
Yeah, and I, I think what you're referencing is when we go to Tallahassee, that, that's kind of the, the direction we want to go, like with our.
There are bills that they are planning coming out that's going to be similar to one, to the chapter one eighty. So I, I do think we want to be involved. I think we want to be very involved. Not the lawsuit, but, you know, any potential bills I think we need to be very involved with.
Yeah, we will.
Okay, all right, thank you. That was, that was it, thank you.
It wasn't your time to speak. We're not, I think that's what you, did you think it was that?
No, I got stuff for that.
You were like, that's it? We're not there yet. All right, next up, we got first readings and introduction. The next items on the agenda are ordinances before the council for first reading and introduction for the sole purpose of the council to authorize the publication of the ordinance for a final hearing. The council will not take final action on the item tonight. Full presentations and public input on the ordinances will occur on the final hearing at which the council will consider final action. I had to read all that? There are no first readings and introductions at this time. City Attorney.
So with the last council minute, we did talk, we did talk a little bit about the hotel and we told you we'd kind of bring back at least an initial game plan to sort of address it. So currently, the applicant has submitted an app, as we told you last time, the permits related to the hotel have expired. They are, they have submitted an application to have their permits renewed. The billing department has reviewed an initial application, has requested certain information, certain changes. They have, the applicant, is my understanding as of this afternoon, had not responded to those requests for information. So, or requests for additional information. So they are not moving forward with the, with the, with the permitting process as quickly as either the city staff would and I'm sure the council wouldn't and as the members of the community would. This afternoon, we met with the code enforcement division and we are going to be initiating code enforcement action against the hotel under the International Property Maintenance Code and we're going to work that through to the special master, magistrate. And we'll move that as quickly as we quickly can as possible. The other option that the city council has is the, there is an ability under the law to actually file a, essentially, don't take this the wrong way, Mr. Gilbert, but a lawsuit where you, you get into, where you file a lawsuit in court and seek a, essentially seek a court injunction compelling them to fix the property. We have that option. That, of course, would involve some additional expense for the city to be able to move forward with that. We think that, that filing the code enforcement action might, might move the property along a little bit, but frankly, it's been a long time, so it, it may be necessary to proceed with that, with that lawsuit also to try to get, to get the, to get the owner of that property to move forward a little, a lot quicker than they have been. So if you, if that's the path you want to do, what we would, part of the reason for filing that lawsuit, and we are going to have a discussion next week with the, essentially the, the fire marshal and the fire department and code enforcement and some other folks involved to, to further vet that issue out. But part of the reason is, we understand that there is a serious public health, safety and welfare issue with the hotel. Although there's nobody in the hotel, my understanding is that I'm not, I'm not a fire expert. My understanding is that in the event that there's a fire in that hotel, that the fire department is not going to go inside the building to try to put the fire. So in my layman terms, that means they're just going to wait for the building to collapse and then put the fire out, which to me seems like is, I think that's a fairly compelling argument that it's, that the building in the way it exists is a public health, safety, welfare issue. So we would move that approach. So with that, if the council wants to move in that direction, we would do the code enforcement piece also because we have that premises property, that process in place. And then we would pursue the, basically an abatement action under, under chapter sixty of the Florida statutes, which is where we would file a lawsuit against the owner of that property and ask a judge to, to issue an injunction to have them either fix the building, basically they would have to fix it, they could ask them, the judge could try to compel them to demolish it, but we don't think we'd, we'd, we'd go in that direction. We'd probably just try to get them to get it, the judge to order them to fix it a lot quicker than they have been.
Can I ask for a brief summary? So you got a, the permit expired?
Permit expired, right?
Yep.
They submitted an application to, to get a new permit. They have not completely, the, the initial application had deficiencies. The billing department said, you've got deficiencies. And my understanding as of this afternoon, they have not responded to those requests for additional information. So the building permit application is basically stalled, waiting on more information from the applicant. And then, and we are going to, as we said, Mayor.
You're not asking us to take action on anything?
Well, right now, well, I'm kind of, I'm asking for direction, yes. Because we are pursuing the code enforcement action through the regular code enforcement process to go to the special magistrate, which obviously we, the council doesn't have to give direction on that. But we are recommending another alternative method that would be, would go contemporaneously with this, which would be for the city to actually file a lawsuit against the owner of that property to have the building declared a basically a public health, safety, welfare issue and then ask a court to issue an injunction telling them to stop the, to abate the, the, the safety issue. And that would involve, we would need direction from the council if, to pursue that.
I'm going to go right down the, I'm going to go from here. Councilmember Fletcher?
I would be one hundred percent in support of, of, of that recommendation. I believe this body has done everything in its power to, to assist throughout, at least my time and, and over the years. So I would, I would support that recommendation in its entirety.
That's the number two thing, the number two option?
That is correct.
Abatement lawsuit, okay. Deputy Mayor Gilbert?
I second, your motion.
And I did want to say, sorry, Mayor, and sorry, Councilmember Gilbert, is, you know, this is the last thing any of us up here want to do to somebody's, you know, property. So I just wanted, for the record, that to be on there as well.
And again, Councilmember, I, this is the end of the end. This isn't a week, a month, a year or six months. This is, we asked you to do something and you're doing something. And I don't want to speak out of both sides of my tongue, but a lawsuit in this area is definitely necessary to get something done. And again, I, I appreciate you looking into how we can fix this. And I, I certainly approve and approach that and I'd ask council to consider that also. Mayor, I yield back.
All right. Have we been in direct communication with, with the owner, not just?
I personally spoke with the owner. Yeah, about six weeks ago. I will tell you, the, the, he told me on the phone when I spoke with him that I could tell the city manager that he had, he had ordered the new windows and he would be providing a copy of the invoice for his order. And that was like said, six weeks ago, we haven't seen anything.
Okay. Councilmember Urban?
Yeah, I've heard that story since I've, I've been on, I, I think the day I got on the council, he told me he was ordering the windows. No, I, just one thousand percent in agreement with Councilmember Fletcher and Deputy Mayor Gilbert. This is just beyond frustrating. They have been, in my opinion, abusing the, the, the rules and abusing the, the permitting laws to drag this out as long as possible. And, and it's just, I'm tired of it and I'm fully supportive of moving forward with this. So that's all I have to say.
And I haven't seen the inside. Y'all have been dealing with this project before I got on here, of course. But I do know the city's been dealing with this for a decade almost, back, yeah, before the last mayor was even on council, it started, so. Okay. I mean, you've got your consensus right there already.
All right, thank you. That's all I have, Mayor, thank you.
Yes, sir, thank you. City Manager?
Yes, last week, or I'm sorry, last meeting, I think that was last week. The council asked for us to prepare a letter regarding the Old Sugar Mill to, to Osceola County to see if we could get some signage about it being a historic site. I know Councilwoman Paul also mentioned that she might have some sites. She did send me an email and I, I didn't know if you wanted to bring it up so that we could potentially modify that, that letter.
So, yes, someone sent me a screenshot of a signage already for Hamilton Distin. There's already a historic marker. But I, if the county is also considering doing these things, which I've also asked the Osceola County Historical Society, which I am a board member on there. And that is a conversation that I'm also having with them because I indicated this same idea to them as well. But if they're considering on entertaining this, then I would like to also add the Narcoucy Arthur Fell Cemetery because that is also historic as well on if the county is going to be doing this. If we're going to approach the county with it, approach them with other ones that are also in the county as well, so.
And that will, that's in the JPA, of course, that's, it will be in the city. I agree with you on that one.
So that was consensus. So we'll modify the letter and we'll, and we'll add it.
The, the current Hamilton Distin is, I know Paula Stark, she, she mentioned there's one down at the, what, near the bathrooms by the water treatment plant? At the end?
I think so, I think, I think so.
That's the screenshot that I got today from someone, so.
That's the one that we talked, should be probably moved to the Sugar Mill.
Agreed.
The remnants of the Sugar Mill.
So we'll talk to Ms. Stark about that if, since she's the one who I think got the original sign. And then we'll modify the letter for the Arthur Fell, to add Arthur Fell Cemetery. Am I, am I understanding that correctly? Okay, thank you.
And, and I'll throw another one on there, I mean, since we're doing it. The old train turnaround in Narcoucy, behind the hardware store. How cool would it be to, to, I, I know, well, the problem is maybe we don't want people, it's somebody's private residence.
It is.
I don't know, maybe one day in, in future councils that that gets preserved somehow. You know what I'm referring to.
When we annex it, we'll, we'll.
It was the concrete, the structure that's built into the ground where the train turned around and Johnny Fryer's Grandma's old house right there.
I also, at the last meeting, Deputy Mayor Gilbert brought up Reis Across America. The total cost that we're expecting is $600. At the time, he had asked if we could use the contingency money for it, which that would require a budget amendment, which is going to cut it very close to the time of the event. So I'd like to ask if we could use the community grant line item. Previously, when people would come in and ask for stuff, we would, we would say, go apply for the grant. So it, it's a, it's typically what the funding source, we would use for that. So I wanted to see if council was okay with that instead of doing a budget amendment. I see, I see three. Okay. Thank you.
I think we agree on that 100%.
Yeah. And then the, the last thing I have, I think I've individually spoken with council members. The clerk of the court left the downstairs area. We have a lease. And as part of the lease, we were, we were supposed to receive six months' notice and we only received one month's notice. I don't have the authority just to let that happen. So I'm asking for council's approval, if you're okay with that. It's about $7,500 that we're talking about total. It is, it is citizens' money either way. It's public funds, but looking for direction.
Deputy Mayor.
The question, that, we had, and Dan will explain this better, but we had six months' out clause, right? Yes, both parties had a right to cancel.
So why aren't we collecting that money?
That's why I'm bringing it up.
That's what we're bringing up.
Essentially, do we enforce the contract? Yes.
If, I guarantee you, if that's flipped, that entity would enforce our contract with them. So I would think we would just do the right thing and enforce the contract. Personally, it's a business thing. I leave it to the pleasure of the council, but it's, it's a deal. You make a deal, you live with the deal.
I saw three. I think I saw Mr. Fletcher, Mr. Urban, and Mr. Gilbert. So, well, Mr. Manzares will help with this.
We will, we will advise the clerk. We, I spoke with him yesterday or the day before and he, we told him we were going to seek direction from the council. I advised him that the city, I did not feel that the city manager could waive that provision. And we wanted to get council direction, so we'll let him know.
Does that include attorney fees?
No.
We're going to put that on that, too.
Oh, you don't get paid, do you? You're free. Well, that's the thing. I mean, we got to go collect this money, you know, that's the, it costs us money.
Right, well.
I'm sure you've spent about an hour talking to Veronica or us, or, I mean, it's, it costs us money to, you know.
That's the beauty of our arrangement with the city.
Oh, it's beautiful.
It's a flat fee, you don't.
We just love attorneys of the city.
That's all I have. Thank you.
All right. Do we want to move, we had economic development and proclamation. Do we want to do that now, or do you want to?
Your call.
Or do you want to save that for another, I mean, we've only been, let's save it for the next workshop. I'm sure it's, next one's coming up in the next week or so.
October 23rd.
I'll be here. All right, that's fine. All right, next, Councilmember Paul.
All right. So this week I had an interesting conversation with a citizen regarding, you know, us as leaders making the right decisions and stuff like that. So I just wanted to share my response to them. You know, as leaders, I think we all can agree that we try to do the right thing for the most part of it. At times, there can be challenges. But, you know, for me, and I can speak for Jennifer A. Paul, but, you know, when I put my hand on the Bible and took an oath, you know, it's the real deal for me. So I always try to lead with integrity when it comes to decisions. I'm, I'm just a, I'm the kind of woman that likes to receive all, you know, informations before I'm petting the cart before the horse and stuff like that. So like I told them, you know, at least we try to do the right thing. Sometimes it can be tough, but, you know, I just like, you know, moving with integrity. And when it comes to decision-making and stuff like that, I don't like to make a decision based on half information or not, you know, full information. I'd rather have the full information or, when it comes to that. So I just wanted to share that on record of what, how I responded to them. So, thank you. And yes, I do have one more thing. I wanted to see if we can also have a workshop with the business downtown community. I've been having conversations with a lot of the business owners there, asking what some of their challenges are. But would like to invite some of the downtown business group to a workshop so they can share some of their concerns that they have and how we can, you know, be better as a growing city, so. And that's it.
That's a great idea. They do the Wednesday markets and other activities there. So, are they doing the wine?
I, I think that's an individual business that does the wine walk.
You're right. It is.
Can I ask, timing wise, we have a long list, how soon you'd like that workshop to be? Is that a special workshop, or is that a, add it to the list with all the other ones?
We'll look at some.
December is open. They might be busy during December, Christmas.
Yeah. Well, I think we can do one before then. We'll find a date. Yeah, we can find a date before then. To talk about all these other things, I think we can throw it all on there before.
November, yeah. October's definitely a busy one.
We meet at three in the morning. As long as it's after six. We just start it late. Councilmember Fletcher. I'm sorry.
You need to go.
Councilmember Urban.
So, sorry, hello, okay.
Did you wake up?
The, earlier at the workshop, the, there was a couple people from the EDAC committee on, in the audience. And I know they wanted to discuss a number of topics as well. So I would recommend, on top of Councilwoman Paul's recommendation to meet with the downtown businesses, I know we have a growing list of workshops to do, but, and this doesn't have to be any, anytime soon because I know we have a lot of topics to cover. But I would recommend having a workshop with the EDAC committee as well, if we, if we have a council like to do that.
I saw three notes. I'll add it to the list.
That's all. All right. And Councilmember Fletcher.
I have nothing at this time, Mayor. Thank you.
Deputy Mayor Gilbert? I've got a long list. Look at this.
No, no, no. Staff, I certainly appreciate you being here. We, we came back from Daytona, started at six and it's nine. And I know, I don't know when Melissa got back, but we're all dead. I brag about St. Cloud all the time to every person I meet. I, I learned so much in the, in the meeting planners conference, what engineers do and meeting planners do. It's really wild, how they interact and how they do it. But it makes us a better city. One thing I got out of it is that we're pretty cool, man. We've got great planners in your department. We got, we got some good stuff going on. Cause I, I think the mayor and I were sitting.
He's the mayor.
The mayor and I were sitting next, not you, but, but the mayor and I were sitting next to each other. And this, there was one guy from Leesburg that's looking for a planner for two and a half years. And, and that's, that's the tough part about it. So, you know, we've got some good things going on. So I, I, I love to praise things. So if we could praise that, that, that would be awesome. And I learned a lot. And Justin, it was so cool that I applied for a additional service that the, the employees of St. Cloud got. And there was an evaluation done and they said, well, this service, it was legally, it was legal fees. And Dan, that's why he dropped his computer. And, and it said, well, the council's not included because they work 7.5 hours a month. And I kind of asked somebody, is that a day or a month or a week or a year? But.
It's a payroll code. That's what I found out. It's a payroll.
I looked, I go, man, you know, I get overtime now.
We work that today.
I was going, I was filling out overtime. I turned it into Kelly and she said, no, you don't get overtime. But no, but you fixed it. And thank you for doing that. We got a great city, going to meetings like we went to. One thing I'm reassured is we're, we've got it going on. We're doing good. We got more projects than any other city. We got things going on. And what I heard about from the other meeting planners, which engineers and meeting planners, correct, there's a difference. Urban planners, and there's a difference, you need a master's degree to have an urban planner, that there's a shortage. So I know Melissa's working on, I know the city manager's working on, to work with different colleges and universities to intern this, to make it a positive versus the negative, because it's something that's needed. And I think we can entice people in the city of St. Cloud to do it. And I know Melissa's doing it. So I'll get it off my soapbox. But Dan, I don't like lawsuits, but yeah, we got to sue that hotel. But, but we, we got to do some things. And with that, I yield to the mayor, but I appreciate everybody here and I appreciate all the work everybody does and the city staff that's sitting here tonight having a list of us. And we got a good dude over there running the, the, the citizens. And I look forward to going down Lake, Lakeshore and seeing you there, my brother.
Jeff thought you were talking to him.
Well, I always talk to Coop. Coop's my man. If you ever had a best friend, it'd be Coop. Cause he owns that money like it's his own. That's the guy you need. It's that guy right there.
He gets a vacation now.
He does.
Now he's done.
Is, is man Kobe?
No, I echo those comments. Had a great time in Daytona. That was with city manager and our community development director. And a lot of staff. I loved seeing everybody there and some staff from Osceola County. And pretty much saw where Melissa came from, you know, from the county and also from Oviedo, I think. And met her old boss and Veronica's old boss. So, you know, after 20 years, I finally got to hang out with the other side of the table, you know, from the commercial development world. And then from up here, it's, I didn't, never really got to hang out with them. So I had a great time. Ken got to show off his fancy moves, like he loves showing those off.
Motown baby.
No, it was really a very, it was, it was really cool. The coolest was, yesterday I went and one of the seminars I went to, the presenter was the Director of Bombing Operations at Avon. He's the director of the Avon Park bombing, bombing range.
Really?
Yeah. So I told him, I said, what the heck are you guys dropping? Cause, you know, we hear it all the way up here. And he said, oh, yeah, that's, that's us. And so, you know, when you see on Facebook, people are like, what's that noise, that rumbling? It's them. So they got 100,000 acres down there. He's a lieutenant colonel and he was a pilot for 20 years. So it was, it was really cool. And we got to hang out with the city manager for Kissimmee. And got to show them what being cool is like.
That's why he lives in St. Cloud.
That's right. And that is all. And let me find the agenda for this one, so we can wrap it up. Oh, and again, thank you, staff, directors, for putting together the budget. I know, you know, Jeff doesn't do it alone. It takes the city manager. I'm not sure the attorney has any involvement in it at all, but.
He says you can't buy that.
You're in there somewhere. No.
I went to law school because I can't do math.
But it, but it truly was a joint effort. You know, we get the finance committee. We've got Scott. We got every, every member and staff participated in that, whether they just collect a paycheck based on the budget or had some input on it. It's, it really is a joint effort. So thank you, directors, for everything you've done and everything you continue to do. And thank you, Jeff. Tonight was your night. Congratulations. And next, we have the information section. And so Thursday, October 2nd, 2025, we have the Community Redevelopment Agency meeting at 3:00 PM at City Hall. Is it still at City Hall? Are we moving on to the community center?
I thought you were going to do it downstairs.
Yeah, on the first floor.
First floor, okay.
In the planning, in the planning.
So I was half right. Not here, but not there.
Yeah. And so there is a, at that time, sorry, there, there's a training that Mr. Coop, Mr. Davidoff, and myself have to attend. So we may be in and out a little bit, have a, have a short meeting. But there's a few things that we have to get done.
Okay. Thank you. And Thursday, October 9th, 2025, City Council meeting, 6:30 PM at the St. Cloud Community Center. That's when we make the move, October 9th. All right. And with that, this meeting is adjourned.